Vinala?
Thank you, Paul. Before we start the meeting, I would like to invite everyone to take part in minutes silence following the tragic anniversary of the answer to their games last week. So if you'd like to join me for a minute's silence, please. Right, we don't have any members of the board, so we can rotate into our four. I'm sorry for the late start of meeting and a couple of IT issues as we're running a hybrid meeting tonight, so thank you for your hand on if you have to watch us on YouTube. So item one for the agendas of apologies for absence.
The apologies from town councillors, O'Donoghue and Davies for Earl Health, councillor Heatherington who's on holiday, and apologies from Buckinghamshire council.
Thank you very much.
To be free to accept all of those, agreed and Fran Davies. Yes, just so I can hear this time.
Thank you much. Item two declarations of interest. What should you declare tonight? Well, okay. If anything arises, don't hesitate to raise your hand. Item three, the agenda is the minutes of the last meeting, which was the 26th of July. Will they agree to that true record? This one?
That's fine, Ken.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, everyone happy to accept?
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Right, item four, the agenda is the actual course appendix. All right, can I hand over to all of you to take this through some of the options?
Most of these are on the agenda for coming up at future meetings. Water bottle refill station, we've spoken to candidates, they might keen to direct support that. We are going to try and find out if there's a water source actually close to the skate park and we'll talk again to Buckinghamshire council about if that could be incorporated around the edge of the skate park and stuff like that.
Anything else that you want to, George?
I think we've got everything on the agenda already.
So any questions on the action plan, so Robyn?
Yeah, through you, Chair. It can come off that for me is not on the agenda, which is to do with the community centre, the future report, which I've mentioned several times. It shows me it's going to be on the next action list. I've got implications to budget and everything at the end of the year, so it really needs to come to the next meeting.
Does it need to be on the agenda or on the senior agenda?
Well, it was on the action list, but things dropped off formally after six months for something which we still didn't.
Okay, great. Okay, now John?
It's a bit sneaky, but with regards to the water provision, what's happening about the, what's happening about the skate park?
Do we have any information on that? Our information was that it was due to start somewhere, that's the last I tried to.
Well, they delayed it because of the summer holidays and they said they'd start the autumn. Now well into autumn.
Robyn, as a local member of the council, you heard, can I remember last time I questioned you about it and I will see you tomorrow and I'll question you in person about it, not in the meeting. And you assured me that it was going to come forward in the autumn, they delayed it, which Edmond was pleased about. He was keen to get it done, he wanted to get it done anyway, to see it completely. So it must be something to do with contracts or something, but I'll go and ask him tomorrow if I get chance before the meeting or after, and if not, I'll email him and try and get a response to the town clerk, which can be shared. He's intentions to do it, he wants to get it done, so I.
We do sort of agree, just getting started.
Yeah, getting it started.
Good question, thank you very much. Anything else on the actual report? I think the GCR items are actually on the agenda, so we can crack on with that. Okay, in that case, we want item five, which is budgets. Item 51, receive the latest figures, which you question if it's B. We want to draw our attention to, or not? Not at the particular moment, I think everything's roughly at this high state of the minute. So any questions on this, John or Robyn?
Yeah, I'm just a bit curious about why we're suddenly spending so much more money on waste, because it is significant, I saw you note it at the start, but it is significant. It's because of the amount, another 600 pounds or so, isn't it?
Well, what's wrong with it?
Little choices goes okay to.
Oh, yeah, we had to increase the number of funding bids, just during the busy period from, I think it was back March, April time, and then we stopped it in September, just had an additional collection of our funding bids, specifically increasing waste in the past to do the lockdowns and everything else. It's, you've got, there's a lot more waste, so we had to up the number of collections and we budgeted for it next year, so.
Okay. We also had to put numbers up on every Sunday morning to do a heart check, which we hadn't done before, so because there was so much happening to make sure bits were being emptied and we were identifying, just to clear them, so it's slightly in time increasing the start budget.
Okay, so predominantly public issues. Thank you, Robyn?
Yeah, it's just a general question, some of the budgets seem not to be completely spent or where we are in financial year. Can we, I presume the next meeting we'll bring back where we think we are with those, because some of those are committed budgets, it's just that they're not actually showing as expenditure now, and they may be against that, which looks like we haven't actually spent as much in some areas within the past, maintenance and vehicles and such like, it's shown that we've got a lot of the budget left, which is committed. Can we just have a little bit granier down for the next meeting? I don't think, I don't think it's instructive, but you do need to know that, because it makes huge difference to the budget setting.
So so next meeting you'll have a, we've gone onto the budget a bit later, but next meeting you'll have a full itemised budget proposal for next year with a full forecast for this year. So you have an item by item forecast, and in December it's still slightly more hard than science, but it will give you as much information as we have.
So we're agreeing on the average review of this one, aren't we?
Yeah.
Is there a problem with the software that the town clerk's using? The committed column is just actual expenditure, that's not being paid rather than a committed project, or we know we're going to spend money on, it's sure it's committed.
So committed means that it's written check, that the check hasn't been cancelled.
So it really is committed, as opposed to committed as a decision of cancel, but not spent yet.
Correct, yeah.
I don't remember initially previously, so it kind of picks up your body, we may well have things already planned to spend, but because it's written check, it's not committed.
Just lastly, through you, Chair, and it is thought mentioned in action is, and the agenda also came up. One of the four meetings, which has so many, now it's stopped actually, the track which when it came up, with the CCTVs. Some comments in the other budgets about CCTV in the town centre and whatever, and I know Lee has been working hard to try and cut down to increase that. Is it likely that, rather than go in great detail, we'll come back with something by the next meeting? Seems to be a wish to have more CCTV in the town centre.
Can we just do what the budget in front of us?
Yeah, it's budget 260400.
Yeah, this is the latest figures.
It's just, I was looking at the budget, you know, it's all about 27 cents spent, which means that if you want to do more, we need to put more in.
Yeah, so we've got a meeting arranged with the obvious again to check location, that's where I was getting, so the will be report coming forth hopefully for the next meeting.
That's just the ongoing process, so that's the maintenance and the data on the.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, it's just that we're not doing much of that.
Okay, so item 11. Yes, so we modify item two, which is to receive and discuss the written report or budget changes for the 22, 23.
So a first and highlight is, this is the first meeting where we discussed this, and I was saying at the next meeting you'll have a full budget proposal for next year, so this is to get an initial sense whether those are, those changes look appropriate, whether we're missing anything you're expecting to see as a change from this year's budget to next year's budget in terms of increases or decreases or the changes you expected to see, was that roughly the correct?
The current is arranged to through, to Margaret and you.
Thank you, and just on solar income, is that just for Lacey Hill Sports and Community Centre, we're not anticipating income from this community centre?
We haven't reached the stage, I mean, confident figures on that yet. We haven't even yet quoted for the solar panels, so it would be premature for me to give.
This is sorted around about way of trying to find out when we're likely to see them on the roof.
So now that we've done, the plan was to do Lacey Hill and then do the community centre, because Lacey Hill is easier because it's a new building.
Yeah.
So now they're up and running, we need to get the survey done on the centre first and then we'll get quotes. Community centres, all kinds of things that could be challenges, so we need to get the building surveyed out first, so when we quote, we're giving the correct information to people of giving us quotes about any issues that might be.
Okay, Robyn?
Yeah, just come back on that, that was part of what I was asking for the next report, Margaret. The, I'm just a bit hesitant whether with what's going on with fuel prices and now they flex and weather, is realistic to look at a reduction. It's on 404602, it's showing that we, a reduction, it may have been that when it was drafted, that we weren't, where we are, I'm not confident about that figure, because fuel prices are very much in flux at the moment, or is that figure balanced out against income from solar, which means we won't be, that might be the explanation, but I'm not sure that a reduction at this point is really going to be tenable.
And so it's not based on solar, it's based on the fact that for the last two or three years we've underspent that budget, so it doesn't make sense to keep making that name, budget.
Well, presumably there will be some use of Lacey Hill during the day, that will be affected by the solar panels as opposed to grid. So the energy usage, daytime usage you're going to, should be used as well. Yeah, and the income on that particular electric one is just for the depot, and yeah, we've changed, we've changed things around slightly. One of the things was we went to a night time meter for the electric round, things like that, so it's a bit of money that could.
Okay. Also, we're going to pick up on the solar income, just from my mind, it says minus 2000, which is fine. Is that the total income, some of which we're going to obviously pass back to the electricity companies and some to use ourselves, or is that purely for that we're going to be making in excess, which we can then put back into the grid?
That's what we're forecasting we're going to make from.
Right, yeah.
So it comes with a bit of a health check, that's it. But it was, it's, I did try to make a conservative estimate on it.
Sure, sure. And then as councillor Stutry says, some of that may well be used to mitigate any increases when we look at item 248, which is the electricity, yes. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, there's no other hands, Robyn will give you a second to do that, the question.
Yeah, it's just 224275.
42.
75, which is replacement fund. We're happy that that's going to be sufficient, it's, it's not a huge figure, and a replacement funds, thinking fund, that isn't too keenly much. We're confident, I'm not confident that that figure, it's probably an historical figure, which is, which is sat there, we need to review.
So, so we've got 5000 in the proposed budget, plus 6000 coming from this year's budget, so it'll be 6000.
So the conversation we had, short was this time last year with members was, and at that point we gave members a likely cost for replacing all our play areas, which obviously a significant figure, and we did agree with Aylesby Vale district council at the time, so maybe it was Tuesday, that within the S106 wish list, all our play areas are covered for future S106 funding if we put bids in. So because we've accommodated replacements through S106 money, we've agreed that, providing that we come within all relevant dates, because of that, we didn't put in a large amount of our own revenue to build up a reserve for play areas. So the 5000 pounds makes a long term reserve, obviously for some reason, yes, when they said it all got through, then we had to reconsider quite quickly, but that was the reason we did it.
Through you, Chair, can I ask you, Chair, just revisit that correspondence to make sure that that was agreed with the historical district council, that's going to be honoured by Buckinghamshire council. I think it will be, no reason why they won't honour it, but I think we need to just refresh that correspondence through, through you and the Chair.
Okay, so I think the important thing is that the overall budget stays pretty static, but it's readjusted to see the priorities for next year, so I think that's a good position to be, given the challenges on council tacticals next year, so I think it's a good start for Chair. What happened with that? Thank you very much. In that case, we'll move on to item six, which is community gardening proposal, or people.
Yeah, so really this is a proposal to try and, so remember at the last meeting, a paper we took to residents who've done a bit of community garden in Bottom Park. So the proposal is that we just ask residents to propose small areas of ground around the town to put green space, which they might want to create a community garden in. I have written to Buckinghamshire council and their House and Trust, haven't yet had replies from them, asking if they would support that scheme. From the spirit, I suspect they would, because this is heavily making it clear that you would only accept green spaces that were suitable, a safe area that didn't affect anything else, and we'd ensure that residents were only using some basic tools. But just, it's a way of trying to give people a bit of freedom and encouragement to make an area around them look a bit nicer if they want to do so.
So I hope you've had a chance to look at the paper, which is an outline draft guide, which is the intention, so questions, so for John and Margaret?
I think this is a great idea. What learning I would add to it, which I hope would be acceptable, would be that we would encourage people to make bee friendly gardens, ones that would encourage insects and bees, because we need more bees and healthier bees in our world.
Certainly, we'll probably go on to draw attention to the plus buzzing recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, whatever there is, if we can add that in this guidance or something somewhere, so we encourage people to grow flowers and plants that are bee friendly. And also lots of stuff that's in the county even better.
Yep, sounds good.
Yeah, thank you. When I read this, I thought, was it to sort of dig at the man, sorry, digs not the right word, the man who'd done it off his own back, because he did that without permission, and here it's saying that it gets permission, but we've written to him, so.
No, that's not intended as that at all.
No, and I think it's a good idea. I don't know quite how we all, obviously we'll do a press release to encourage people to opt in, and I have seen this happening in other places as well, you know, when I walked around, I've seen areas of community gardens, and I think it's really good, and people maybe learn something from that which they can transfer elsewhere, so, which is a good thing, but if we can, you know, encourage eco-friendly practices, so much is better. And I know it says hand tools, I mean, no, cattails and everything, so that would minimise noise and things like that to other park users.
Where vegetables, Brexit keeps on going.
I did see an example of the council, they'd encourage people to have bees on council space, I thought that might be it. It made me quite nervous from a health and safety point of view, I thought, let's do the simple things first, see how that goes, yeah.
Robyn?
It's good that we return to this, because we worked some time about the edible garden, which was achieved in the Hartburn site, which is good that we return to this subject again. One of the things I think we do need to do with it is consider, when there's a small space where you can't actually grow anything, you can actually grow fruit trees, and fruit trees do provide food, so, and they also provide blossom, which protect the bee population, and they're also our free resource for the community. I think they might have addition of possible fruit trees, whatever in it, because if you only got a small piece of land which is suitable for it, a small fruit tree can provide something for the community, which can be looked after, and it looks after the bees, and it looks after the wildlife, and it looks after everything. I'd like addition of that, and maybe we can't really do anything on pressure to get our agreement from Buckinghamshire to actually do this, otherwise it looks rather false. So I think we need to go to Buckinghamshire council and ask them whether they're happy to partner this, and then a little bit of work on a taking on board, council hardware suggestions and the mayor's suggestions, but rather criteria of what we would like to achieve out of it, so that we can actually see that we've actually achieved what we would like to do, and, and also it's about engagement, isn't it? The, you know, types of people we can get engaged, some areas, I've seen really good projects in communities where you can get in with a wheelchair and you can do some gardening and, and stuff, where it could be that over time we could get that, maybe any grown herbs, which, or sensory plants, which offer food as well. I think we could, it's got real good legs of doing a proper community project, but after we've got all the ideas, we need to get the, perhaps then at that stage, it's about how we get the community involved, and the way we succeed with the community landscape, you know?
Yeah, that is a very point. Well, I suppose I would chime in, but this is, this is to enable community groups or street associations or group of people to be proactive, so we're enabling, helping enable rather than lead it. So if there are communities that want to do it, we can find a way to make it happen.
With agreement at Buckinghamshire council.
Just to point to the tree, we might need to make a few more checks around trees, because obviously you don't want, we'd have to check what kind and probably they're dwarf, because what we don't want to do is someone to plant a tree and then five years later he's got a liability to sort out that he wasn't expecting.
I didn't, I said the appropriate tree, which I thought Lee would take that as dwarf.
I mean, to be honest, the tree planting, I think, isn't necessarily a community led thing, because that's a really, in the various councils, we do it anyway. I think this is more about low key, literally low level, not too much, a small group of community activists or neighbours want to improve their neighbourhood.
Through you again, Chair, we did have this project before, I might be able to contact some of the people who've done the edible project, whether they're still on transition, Buckingham, I think it was, wasn't it?
It was John Morton, I can't find his details, because I agree with the ground for much.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just that it's silly to do something and upbring them back into the question, you know?
Thank you, we just have to be very careful, they can get, you know, somebody's put some acetylene and then he gets moaned, and he doesn't say no use garden tools, I've obviously misread that, does it? It just says that, I mean, no power tools, it's just got the common hazards, it doesn't say moaned, I haven't read it, it said don't use.
Well, the last thing one is that excavation stuff.
We've had issues, people doing stuff and then they're getting cut and wasted.
By making sure that the relevant landowners, the council's emergency team or the town council or wherever, it's logged on the relevant map.
Yeah.
There's a little bit on, I mean, there are a lot too old, by the way.
Is that one agreed?
Yeah. So we have to go to the house, yeah?
Agreed.
That's, thank you very much. Right. Item seven, item seven, we want to receive a written report on the community flood plan test exercise.
Okay, so I'll speak for the deputy town clerk for the report. And what the report doesn't go into much detail about is, we did have a test exercise a couple of weeks ago, so we worked really well with Buckinghamshire council and their resilience team, who created a fictional flood, which was remarkably similar to one we had last December. And we went through all the theoretical phases of that, so they phoned us and said there's a flood coming, and staff in the office immediately phoned the flood volunteers to make sure they were available, and then staff phoned the number of residents to make sure everybody was pre rehearsed that we're going to do this, to talk to them, then a couple of the flood volunteers went out and helped some residents practise fitting one of the flood defenders to their front door. One of the real successes of that was the bit of work with Buckinghamshire council, so the town council was involved in their initial emergency phone briefing, which we hadn't been before, so they now have a flood plan, they understand it, we understand their approach to flooding, we've had quite a few detailed discussions around exactly who the job is, what, where, when and how, and what. So I think it was a really successful event, there was some key issues it brought out, was to report errors through, so you have seen the beauty of a plan before, so what you've got there is a slightly amended version and clearly listed in the report is the changes that have been maybe made to the public court, so the recommendation is that we've got that as it is. It is recommended that you agree, officers got the flexibility to change the plan through the year with few details, as we go through, every day's a learning day, and that we then review it every year, which I think is an important part of this process, is we don't forget that this plan's been, we do do a proper review every year, and also we're right to residents who might be affected every year to remind them of the plan and the other contracts.
Thank you, that's good to hear. So we've got the flood plan, which is from the. Right, any questions to the town clerk? So I've got, so Robyn, Robyn, sorry, Robyn for some.
First thing, can I thank the officers producing the report? I was back in the afternoon on the day we were doing it, and I saw, I saw Susan when I knew councillors down at the members in public involved in it, so good for us to get involved, and, and anything I asked for the Chair is, will they have to be slightly amended? Because I don't think it's publicly, when the draft, section 19 works come in, will that have some implications on it? I know it's a draft report, I don't know whether that report's public yet, will that mean to, if we give the officers scope to amend if there are recommendations in that report, we need to come into this? I think that's appropriate, because that report's been produced and will, it just say quite a lot, and I'm not going to say anything about it, but it might be there some implications from that work that council, that's council have undertaken, which I'd direct back on the way this report goes, and if we're silly to miss that, but we say spend the fortune on getting it done, and I know that it's been discussed that it's coming, when it is coming, it's hopefully going to offer us some positive solutions.
Yes, so good question, in terms of anything on plan, that's, will be impacted by that section 19?
So officers have seen the draft, the S10 report, and we've responded just with the factual, to make sure the facts are incorrect from town council's point of view. I'm sure if there's anything substantial, we'd bring it back to the future meeting, to be honest, if there's anything minor, then we'll move it, but I'm not sure there's anything substantial, because we've been working through this with Buckinghamshire.
Yeah, thank you.
I suspect the big issue of the descent floods was the flood of the river level readings were taken from our location, which meant very late flood warning, and the EA have already acted upon that, so that will be my biggest concern, but I believe that's all now. Basically, now finally looking at the river levels, keep looking at as well as breaking.
I'll just say thank you to the end of the report.
Good, thank you, I've got one question, I've got a few typos, you can expect that from me, I don't disappoint. If I go through them, page three, with the number one against it, it should be personnel, not personal, yeah, can you see where I am? Page three, objectives, number one. Page four, I've got a question, what's IMT? I can't see it, if I'm under the. Page four, I've got a question. What's IMT? I can't see it if I'm under the bullet points. The first lot of bullet points, it's, um, or front bullet point four or five.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's the incident management team. I will.
And we did agree we would explain that and. Um, page five, I think, um, flood warnings, the last bullet point under flood warnings. Um, is affective, not effective, I think. I'm sorry if that feels pathetic. It's at the top of the page. Second bullet point at the top of the page. This is page five. Can you see that affective? And also on page five, ETC communications lead, which should be agencies plural with the apostrophe R, agents and CIES. I'm sorry about this. Um, and the BTC star STV, last bullet point.
We are required.
We are required.
Yes. So actually.
Oh, what does that mean? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense, does it?
I realize. Well, I've got them now.
Yeah, I, I've got that. I forgot to make an order. I think, I suspect that's probably supposed to be the bullet point above. It's two minutes.
Very funny, yeah.
So if you just want to double check, there's nothing missing there.
Yeah, we will double check.
And then right onto page 12, there's reference pages 11 to 13 in the script. But I think it should read pages 13 to 15. Can you see near, near the bottom? You see appropriate flood of course from pages 11 to 13, but that is written on page 12. So it doesn't make sense. I think it's pages 11 to 13, no, 13 to 15, we should say. And that's it.
I think you, you win the prize, Margaret.
Good thoughts. Thank you. Uh, Tom.
Yeah, a couple of points. Um, page seven, riparian owners. Um, it says that they are not liable to improve a natural water course. Now, I appreciate, of course, they're not on the job of improving it, but are, they are on the job of maintaining it and not allowing, I guess, river weed growth to reduce the flow from what it was, say, a few years previous. I'm thinking they're very stretchy river which has been allowed to become quite overgrown by the riparian owners. And I just wonder whether that sentence is going to, in a sense, give people a kind of clause, get out from not doing anything. Saying, well, nature's just taking its course. It's not merging to improve things. I'm comfortable with nature all better. I'm just questioning whether that's the right sentence that we're in. And whether there should be something in that same paragraph about what we talked about in the past of natural flood management. Now, a lot of the streams and brooks that feed into the river, many of them not in the parish, but one or two of them might certainly have some of it moving in the parish. And therefore we need some way of referencing it in there. I don't have words for all this, but as I say, two points, you've got another, another point as well, but just, well, before we look at that section. I think there should be something different to what that last sentence should be. I think we need some mention of natural flood management.
Okay. I do want to actually, rather than that last sentence, does it actually need to point to the, living on the edge, the statutory guidance for our bearing owners, which we need a lot clearer. And to remind our bearing owners that there are a lot of duties to figure out.
Yeah, I, I think we need to affirm that because a lot of people just seem to ignore it.
Yeah. But I don't think they want to repeat it in here, but I think if it makes it clear about, yeah. They should refer to the statutory guidance. That's whatever it's termed at the time.
Yeah. And what about the reflected natural flood management in there as well?
Well, this is a flood response rather than creating new projects.
I suppose, but I, I, given that we've got space, a quick note to.
I suppose, I suppose the town council isn't the agency that would control metro flood products. They are, they are managed by either the general rate board or the Buckinghamshire Council.
Yeah. I know, I understand that.
I, I would just don't see the town council to be recommending on stretch river that we have no knowledge of.
Not recommend, just saying there is natural flood management strategies in place or something like that. Just so that when people are reading this, because I think most people, if they're going to read anything about community, about flooding in the town, they'll probably go here first rather than, than try county documents and structures and so on. I just think some reference would be useful. That's all.
Do you have a point on those?
Yeah. Okay, got two more points, two other hands going up, two more points, sorry folks. I think reference what Margaret said about the, um, the relegations, maybe a glossary in there somewhere wouldn't be a bad idea. Add some links to all the documents to add that to page within, within, within that motion policy. And my last point is really about management on the day because we provide lots of phone numbers um, at the end or whatever page number it is. Uh, do we have an out of house number? Because a lot of those numbers only operate from nine to five. Um, do we have an out of house number? Do we need an out of house number? Because sometimes this stuff starts happening at the middle of Christmas time, you know, late in the evening.
There, there are numbers, but they wouldn't be public numbers because they'd be for the special staff or councillors to access.
I just think people might need, I mean, if I'm, if I'm living in Hunter Street and I notice things arising.
Well, the environment agency has its 24 second number, which is what we all use.
Well, I think we need that note on the list that we, we should make it clear on that list which of those are.
Yeah.
That's the point.
Yeah, so I think there are ones there which are, which, yeah.
Okay, I'll show them.
Just hopefully next time we do remember, guys, actually listen to what people are saying, which is, just say thank you very much.
Yes, well, yes.
Um, anyway. Yes, um, thank you, Chair. Um, I'd once again commend the town clerk and the team for the work done with the flood. Um, my question is regarding the flood mobile. Um, this is in October, so that's still going on and what steps are taken towards that?
I've not heard anything since, I correspond some while ago, so I, I will chase that up again. Um, I, I know they're intending to come, but I've not yet had a date from them. So I've got to keep myself chaste, thank you.
Because I think when we spoke with them last, they said we'll do them on us to get a touch of them. That happens coming in October. Okay. I know there's a lot of interest in the flood mobile, so yes, we could get days in the diary for that. Kind of sets yourself with the surrounding villages of which you can see to work. Thanks guys for that. Um. Okay, um.
Other than this, right? Could you read your information?
Well, Doris, how does comment set up? Thank you very much for organising the test exercise and, um, reporting on that. Thank you very much. Uh, Robert, is there any questions?
It might be worth, whether it's appropriate, not just to, because taking on board National Harvest's points about responsibility and riparian owners. Um, that is pretty much known that in our report that we just publish who owns which bits of the waterway. We work with Buckinghamshire Council and did in the other day, including their stretch the river out and cutting bushes out and trees out of the river. And the river, I think we need to put it in there so people do know who owns which stretch of the river. Because they quite often believe it's all owned by the council and it isn't, it isn't really. And where the council's got responsibility is, is where it's some other person without naming people. It should be down who owns it. I think just a little map, which I think should be able to go into the report, not pointing fingers. I don't think that's what we're here for, but just it will help questions.
Good. Um, so Chair, can I just support, um, also as I was trying to just say, I remember when I went on the tour of the moving planes, there are some certain areas that some private companies do all and not keep it maintained. So what steps are we taking towards, you know, what can we do with respect to that? That's a good, good question. As a property particular, uh, camera mill company, that was the one that was mentioned, having to kill the problem. Well, I suppose picking up all your points, it's a bit like, um, the road level because there's a default or defect on the roads. We, we don't go fixing it. We just tell the relevant person to hopefully sort it out. It should be the same river. Um, but if there is a defect or an equipment on the river, we should then report it to the relevant landowner or the above the region scheme if necessary. Um, so hopefully no harm to refresh our memory on who wants water. To be honest, I don't think it's an overly complicated piece of work, isn't it? When they're working upstream, it is basically Buckinghamshire Council, town council, then university. And then it's only really, um, when you get beyond Fisher's Field that it gets into private ownership, really.
Yeah.
There are two bits, obviously, in the town centre, but.
Well, it's true for people as well.
Yeah. And I think it's possible, difficult and, and, and it just, it'll be good for other people to have the document.
That's what I'm just conscious of is that we don't have great work on it for the team on something that we don't have responsibility.
That's where I'm coming from.
Um, so that we, we make sure we have all the agencies to account. You know, the environment agency is the main river authority. People ducking their, their responsibility quite regularly.
I've said Chen, and people do often say it's the councils, it's not the councils.
Yeah, very quickly, as I say, it's all the council. Yes, you're quite right and we'll get it reported. So yes, I don't need all the complications. Um, actually, you can have some of that, so I just missed you. So I wasn't sure if you had, if you had a birdie.
No, 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 I didn't know.
Okay, so are we being asked to agree the, the, sorry, not to report? And then agree the flood response plan with the corrections that are being suggested and additions that are being suggested?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Excellent. Thank you very much. On the agenda. Um, okay, that is really what I was asking. It's the practical road cemetery. Uh, we've got two items, I think we want to review the cemetery fees through the report.
Yeah, this is the annual uplift of the cemetery fees for practical road, just practical road at the moment. Um, and we just use the RPI figure, latest RPI figure, which we've added on. Any slight differences? Normally we update this, we'll have done in September. Uh, but now we're just going to move that up until April, just so it matches in for all the uplifts for all the other things that tie in. Um, so yeah, it's just asking members to agree, agree to it, right?
My, just one question before I open up. Um, so did the budget assume that these would have been uplifted by now, this year's budget? No.
No.
Miss Margaret.
Okay, yeah, similar point to, um, in the last one, this CFF, I have seen further down, it's trials. Humor fund, but in this table it's got CFF with asterisk twice and it's not explained. But it is in the handbook explained. So does that matter here or?
Practically it's not. It's not like we're struggling with space enough.
Yeah. No, I think I've just cut it off the bottom and I've cut the table out. But yeah, it's fine talking in the handbook, I know on the cemetery fees.
Yeah.
Those are some more detailed.
I noticed that there.
We'll make sure it's on the website as well.
I, I have it back. Can you say one apostrophe after residents?
Oh, well. I think I did notice a couple of things that.
Because it's a, that's a species. Um, okay, anything else, Margaret?
Not on that one. I'm having the handbook.
Okay, well, come to that, uh, in a moment. Uh, Robert?
No, I wouldn't. The bit of this text, I'm always impressed with people's understanding of the written word. Um, the, I think, I think just to make clear that, that it just might clear it that this is to do with the old cemetery. Would then know, um, this would have any influence on a new cemetery. If people would, must not ever give anyone the idea that this would carry over. Then a new cemetery's cost could be based upon it and we have to make a notice of that.
Well, the report is called plus.
Yeah, I know. The people would, I know that people just challenge people to all of them.
You can tell them really tiny.
No, I'm okay. So people wrong, we draw conclusions.
Point two, what do you think?
I would think, yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions? We're there on the uplift. I think it seems pragmatic and plausible. Have you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we've got eight point two, which is to review and then the cemetery handbook. Um. So that's eight point two. Um, any questions? What, you want to say anything?
No, I mean, we updated it a while ago. It's just to get the committee's approval. Uh, and then, yeah, we can review it every year. Of course, I do, I keep a, a logbook of all the things that we alter during the year. And unless it's really important, I'll, I'll do it on the year review.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got one or two bits. On page 10 at the top, the first two, um, lines. I think it should, there should be a full stop after cutting and then placing a new sentence, otherwise it doesn't make sense to me. Unless I've just completely is reading it.
Leave, leave me alone. I might imagine it's obvious.
Um, and page 12, it says, what does basic humour consist of? Um, and it's got A, N A F D and S A I F, which is explained. But I think that there shouldn't be an A in front of that in the comprising. And then what now is B should be A. Does that make sense? Can you see where I am, Nina?
I can't. I've put it down like it's set. You'll find it afterwards correctly.
Oh, I see. Yeah. So, so A is something that leads into the list that comes afterwards.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't say A at that point. It should say A where it says D.
Yeah.
Okay, so formatting issue there.
Yes.
Last question.
Okay, that's what's happening.
Okay, um. So apart from those two, uh, adjustments, would you agree?
I thought it was really helpful documenting actually, you know, with all that, a list of help groups and things like that.
Sorry, Robert, do you have a plan?
Yeah, it's just, two points, um, just, it reads okay, but should they not be aligned in there? Are we taking on liability as a memorial seat when they carry in or are we leaving that liability with the person? Because sometimes you have a memorial seat coming in and deteriorates because it's not up to standing. And then they, it might be the council then asked to, it should, should we have some clarity over whose responsibility that memorial, memorial seat is? Because it can run into, it can, people can choose the most unusual seats which fix their emotional faults at the time. But we haven't got anything there that says, well, we're liable for maintenance of it or they're liable for maintenance.
I think my intention is I was last involved. I thought we had a standard type of bench that we didn't have.
Yeah, I do, I did. It's a standard one, but there are one or two others where the, the council gave special permission at one, historic one. Uh, yeah, but there is a standard bench and we don't cover the maintenance or anything like that. But you're right, it could be made a bit clearer.
I just think it's actually under the benefit dispute, the down the line.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Chair. I don't have the document for me, but if the document or the bench is found unfit, what happens? And the owners don't maintain it. What happens then?
So if it was, um, down the front, we just remove it. And so we have done it with an older one that was trapped and we do repair them if possible.
But we don't guarantee it.
Yeah, we do if you can on our own. So we do check them, but we don't take liability for repairs.
My bench is, and then it's here. You know what I mean?
Okay, so those suggested, um, clarification, happy to agree on. Excellent. Thank you very much. Right, that brings us on to a big chunk here on the agenda, which is the climate emergency actual plan. Um, so item number one is to receive a discussion on the parish carbon footprint report.
Thank you. Um, so councillors have report fifty two. So this comes from councillor Shae's those actions from last time, which was around looking for a parish wide carbon emissions audit. Basically to give us, um, a clue as to whether we focus any community based action. It ties in nicely with the meeting that we're hoping to, or we are arranging for our climate champions. Um, where we'll be looking at community engagement and where we're going to kind of focus the sections. So what do we do? So we went now, we looked at Impact, which is an online tool. It uses sort of thirty different established data sets. Um, what we've got in front of you is basically Buckingham's report. Um, it's split across consumption and territorial. I think we should really focus, I've given you also this bit down, what, what these two mean. I think it's best to really focus on a consumption based footprint. Um, really because it, it helps us understand more about our community, individual sectors. And that's also going to come back to where we're going to. Uh, I've got some questions there which can, either the front committee or equally confront our climate champions. A question where we want to go with this. Obviously you can see from the report, um, the biggest chunk of emissions per household, per annum for Buckingham comes from travel. Obviously, you can see from the report, um the biggest chunk of emissions per household, per annum for Buckingham comes from travel, uh which is broken down with private transport, um flights and public transport. I mean, talking about sixty eight percent, then followed by goods and services. Um. Most of my comments are in the report, so I would say from the recommendation, I think it's, I don't know how much members will they want to dig into it tonight, or if they feel they just want to refer to some of the climate champions, to get into.
Excellent, there's certainly plenty, as you say, to, to think about within the report. Um, so I mean, one person, I think, there's a, if there's anything we can help chuck onto the table for the climate champions to chew over in more detail, then that'd be good to get them to discuss it in more detail, but if there's anything we want to sort of point in that direction, is there any priorities that we want to consider, or what we suggest, I think it's a good time to do it. So, Margaret, can you go first?
Thank you, um, yeah, thank you for taking, doing this piece of work, but I found it quite shocking, actually, because it's so high compared to other towns, apart from Winslow. And I thought, why, why should Buckingham be so much worse than all these other places?
It's interesting, isn't it? And I think it's not until we compare ourselves to others that all of a sudden we sort of start to really become intrigued by this, and Brackley's so much know of them.
Yeah.
And why, certainly, again, they've got a lot of conversation in the office, um and I've dug into the methodology a little bit more around it. I think really, if you take a higher metro journey route, it's around, it's around the outskirts of the area that we live in, so Buckingham, we have the one pass that comes straight past our doors, we don't have a huge amount of industry there in Buckingham, I'm going to compare Brackley, Brackley does. So whilst we have a similar level of housing, a, a larger percentage perhaps of the people that live in Brackley may have a very short journey to get to work, and they may be able to walk to work or get a bus to work. Or they might work in a town that's very close, whereas in Buckingham, most likely, you are going to get in your car and drive to London, you're going to drive to Oxford, or the nearest train station and commute to London. There's very, very few people that work in Buckingham.
Hmm.
Um, equally flights is a huge percentage for our annual household carbon footprint booking. A large percentage of that may be frequent flyers, maybe people that live in Buckingham that sort of go to various European countries, once or twice a month for work, and then have one or two foreign holidays. Um, personal transport, how many cars in Buckingham have more than one car on the driveway? You know, maybe a, a car for the teenager. It's, when you compare two other towns, you start to perhaps understand that it is, it's more around the, yeah, the affluent lifestyle of residents, which makes us slightly more carbon intensive than some other towns. Similar for Winslow, Winslow doesn't have a huge amount of industry in it. You know, in Winslow, you're most likely to jump in your car and drive somewhere to go shopping, drive somewhere to go to work. But again, this has to be taken with a pinch of salt, this is, this is not gospel, this is assumptions drawn from the data, which is that I.
There's a lot of, a lot of assumptions lead to the final figures, although maybe some parishes that perhaps are more generous in their assumptions and some are perhaps not so generous in their assumptions. Because no one came around to ask me about my carbon footprint, so it is all based on general data, it's not really specific data, so I think this is a feel. But I wouldn't, my personal opinion is we don't date it as gospel, that is definitely for Buckingham, this is a feel for where we are. Um, but I think also it gives us a feel for what the town council is best placed to have influence and change. Um, and I'll just, I'll just remind myself that tomorrow, um uh the Buckinghamshire Cabinet is looking at the climate changing according to strategy. So there are other things happening at the same time that we can work with or point people in the direction of, and if there's really low collections that we can emphasize and support and promote, um then that's probably where our value is best added. Um, but I don't think we're going to change an awful lot of the people who are passionate for work because they happen to have a job in London, and they decide to live in Buckingham because it's a nice place to live and get schools and access countryside, they're not suddenly going to give up the job just to pick the carbon footprint up. Um, which is unfortunate. Uh, but it gives us a few things to, to certainly think about. Um, so hi to Robin and I'll go down this side too.
Firstly, can I thank Annie and Nina for the work they've done in putting it together, I think we should record our thanks in the minutes. Um, and it's, it's, it's good. Also, I have to compliment Nina again, because when we attended the meeting that's Annie and I attended together the other day, which is the mayor of Buckinghamshire, she was so adequately quick to answer the questions, so professional in answering questions, and she got all the answers to most of it there, which is a quality, and, and, and we must note that. And I think this is something that we should let the climate action champions work with Nina and and Annie on to try to draw it down, because I'm nervous about the figures. Um, they, they put us, whatever, having read some council reports in the past where they state their statistical neighbours, there is always a tendency to put in a version to do, to actually make this outlook better, we haven't done that, so in that point, it's, it's, it's good. Uh, you know, you find some council which is treacherous and you put it in there and you don't feel a quid of that. Uh, but I think it's good, and I think we should compliment her on the work, I think trying to pull this report together now is incredibly constructive, we need to go to the next conversation and come back to us, and then, and we can all join in that conversation, it would be huge for the climate champions. What's happening there, and thank you again, Nina.
Hi, John. Um, John?
Um, and as I just said, Nina did all the work, quite well, and amazing, um, so thank you, Nina, I think the next um very informative, very challenging, fascinating, really, altogether. Um, and I, I mean, we'll talk about the stuff which I've been treating, but one is promoting the census that was done this year with Addams Data, because I think that one probably added a bit more depth and a bit more accuracy. Some of the data, obviously, I didn't have to get the question that was asked by lunch, there was stuff in there about change of travelling and so on. Um, clearly lockdown and the pandemic would have had an impact on the figures as well. I think the nature of work and the nature of travelling to work has changed forever. I don't think it's going to go back to where it was before, despite the uh um urgent requirements by the government to go and eat more over by assemblies in use. Um, I don't think it's going to go back to where it was. Um, I guess what I'm interested in is whether the measures that are in here are sort of like one off measures, or are they able to change and flex over time, because obviously we are where we are. But what would be interesting is if we do this again next year, will it show, will it, are the indicators sensitive enough to show any change? Because that would be interesting to see whether we might do as a town council is having any impact at all. It's a very complex system, of course, so we probably couldn't judge that. I think what it shows as well is we don't have a train station.
Hmm.
And we'll be interested to see what happens with it, so what it does. And also the impact it will have on us as well, because the travelling to Windsor would be a little bit quicker than travelling to Billings. I think it reaffirms the importance of public, public transport. Um, so I think it's just, it's just very provocative, and it's a great report.
Margaret, can I?
Uh, I want, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'll also attack on what councillor Harvey said, and thank Nina for this report, it's a very, uh, quite, quite interesting read, especially with the figures in front of it. Um, is there a possibility of taking action or, you know, something through this committee to try and, you know, act upon cutting down this in the long term? Um, one of the possible things that I was thinking of is maybe uh expanding bus routes, I know that Stoney Shrapford has two main bus routes going through it, and that is the X sixty and the X, uh, what was it, the number five, six or five, that go straight through Stoney Shrapford to Walton. Uh, whereas we have four bus routes. Would it be inter, well, what would the studies in sort of particularly increasing these bus routes have?
Or use of the bus route?
Yeah, yeah, use of the bus routes.
That's what I think you're getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have a bit of a chicken head call in Buckingham, where we paid significant amount of money via section one six to run a early registered service to make more, and no one used it.
Hmm.
So when the money ran out from any developments, the operators, well, two people used it. Um, which is terrible because you people rely on it, but it didn't generate more usage, which was the whole point of trying to break your bus stands, which is quite irritating.
But for my frontline work, it's, I mean, I'm kind of biased on this, as I am one myself. Um, but it was incredibly difficult to get to work set through Covid. Um, but the implications of the environment were, like, everything, the C F two levels just went down because no one was going to work.
Hmm.
Very different people were going to work. For those that have to go to work, would that be a better sort of option?
With the down on meeting.
Let's keep that in the record.
No, I, I don't think I'd be going to our case, the butcher, telling them that they're out of business tomorrow.
We'll let you do that on your own, John.
So, I love that.
I was quite happy to support the British Pork Industry today.
I might buy them all the way in.
Um, but I, I just really, actually, you know, jovial um point, actually, just raised a challenge in that whole carbon debate about personal choice, personal responsibility, um and actually the impact on, on personal freedom, on what people want to do and who they want to shop with and where they work and where they go to school and everything else. Um, so I'm also, I'm very nervous about being dictatorial about these sort of things, but I think we're in a good place to encourage the right choices. And so for me, the, uh, the, the suggestions that jumped out for me in the blue box is, uh, one was food waste. Um, I think it's standards that, you know, a fifth of food is, is wasted, um whatever your personal budget circumstances, um that is some standards to me. Now, I'm always conscious that there will always be food waste, because, you know, you don't do much with that many skins and banana peels and stuff, there will always be some part washing food waste, but I can't believe a fifth food wasted is, is huge, so there's something there we could help um do locally and, and challenge. Um, another one, given our topography and morality, um I, is the electric bike thing. Because a lot of people don't like to cycle because of the hills and distances. Um, but electric bikes is a scheme that's just started in the Isle of Wight, which is to encourage people to think about travelling two or three miles on an electric bike, that they wouldn't have contemplated a push bike. Um, and they've got some funding to help encourage people to try it out for half a day or even a week if they want to work on one. And given our locations with Silverstone, our surrounding villages that have some interesting business parks, actually, is this something that we could help encourage at a local level? That people think, actually, I don't need to have a second or third car on the driveway, an electric bike actually might be an option. So that's something I personally keen to look at. Um, and then I suppose I should just remind members of my declaration, I founded the Bucks and not a keen to E V club. Uh, but I think there's a whole debate about electric cars, um in rural locations are very doable, and I've been electric for four years now, um and we've got the back. Um, I think there's a lot of people who live in a rural area that don't think it's right for them, but there's opportunity to raise awareness, opportunity, and see the range of vehicles that are available out there. And someone very reasonably used as well, it's not just expensive options. So those are the things I think we could help encourage at a really local level, that could have a fairly quick impact on raising awareness. But it'll be interesting to see how the champions would chew over some of the other issues that are raised here, and see what we can do at a local level, or encourage our partners at Buckinghamshire Council or other agencies to push the buses. Uh, the cap, the cap Buckinghamshire Council is the bus authorities at work, are the things that we can have encourage, I mean, it's been a long time since we've had a bus awareness day in town. I remember having Reva in town outside the old jail, and we raised awareness about the bus routes and the ticketing system, and the rest of it. So it's probably a great idea, maybe remind Reva that, maybe they want to do that again, it's quite a while.
Just a point, all this is an interesting point, but you know, you, you go to Billings, and it's, everything seems so modern. It's like, you get like, no, no, I've talked to you. You know, then all these like, um, pay points you can go to and then.
Yeah.
Well, it is in a city of a quarter million people, so it does have a slightly different tone.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, look to chairman of this report, that was a positive, it's going forward, discussing tonight, really, we will be discussing in the future. Is Ever Gardens will do something to actually improve our food waste, stroke, whatever. The allotment that we're going to be putting in, in the new cemetery coming forward, that'll be something to prove ways near people compost who've got those allotments. As Ruth was our compost champion on this account, I remember her standing behind, many times I've seen Ruth at the meeting, then going to compost, being, isn't, it's trying to get people to sell compost, so I think that therefore we have got some good turning points, which could make a lot of difference, and and I think people are going to want to eat better food um in the future, and I think comments about being an African area, I mean, it, it, it can cut both ways, you can eat better food because you're not African, because you choose to grow it, or you can choose to grow it because you are African. You look at all the allotment associations round here, they seem to function really very well. Um, my brother Lockton, so May's Morton, did win a cup this, this year, so he's very proud.
Um, so, and just, just before we move on compost, I mean, again, I think that we, we can help support, I'm just reminding myself, the Buckinghamshire Council still runs the discounted composting business scheme. Um, I don't know how many people even know it exists, or.
I do.
So there's lots of things that we can keep reminding people that they're around. So, um.
Yes, I was just going to say, um, once again, well, I'm the one who put the report together, but this came up at Buckingham School, I went with them, was it Wednesday, Thursday?
Friday.
Friday, yes. Anything I said, it's not from habits, right? Um, what you see is from the report, you can see that it's consumption, consumption habits, so I think we need to focus about one, our kids in schools. So they start forming good habits at an early age, it's easier to form it now, it's hard, of course, to change our habits, you can't tell if you want to travel again, you can't tell that much. But if they start learning from a younger age, good habits, environmentally friendly habits, so I think we should think of initiatives that will take some principles, laws, course, so that our future residents will then have better growth.
And would you agree, Nadine, judging by the audience there, it's Mary from Dorf, um, or the, Margaret, I think all the others there are pretty much on mete, but maybe definitely the ones who were talking to them, um, that they were quite challenging, so I think we are out the door now.
So it is our role, that the traffic does get worse when the rain starts, because everyone wants to leave to school. So there are some habits that are easy to change, and there's habits actually, you have to make more difficult decisions if you really want to follow this through. We had a couple of people mentioned to me at the weekend that, you know, the town council has enabled a huge amount of carbon to be generated, because it's a better.
Yeah.
The number of diesel generators belching out toxic fuels in our town centre. You know, if we are, if this is a climate emergency, then what are we doing to encourage a more greener function? You know, that's, that's the sort of change we need.
I would add to that, to, tomorrow, we've got our, um, our equal auditor visiting this, where he's going to look at all of our emissions throughout one, we skipped one, two and three, and it'll be also looking at our events, so it's a very, it's a very basic view of what we're doing at the bottom ground, so we're doing the charity fair, but in time, I'm sure he'll be digging into that, so we will be coming back eventually to the report that actually said, this is our carbon footprint, this is the data for our carbon footprint, and how that breaks down, and we may have to make some.
I think that'll go in the event, so then you'll go back and get our document.
But there's some of the hard decisions we're, we're challenging other people to make, but we also have to make them too, if we truly believe this is a climate emergency, which is what this motion was. So we can just sit around and say, it doesn't, doesn't include us, we'll still have a whole lot of events that we want to do, if we're, you know, we are.
We could stop mowing the grass, that'd actually save a lot of petrol, and we could stop wearing, yeah, and I think, I think it's not so difficult.
Robin, I didn't, I wanted to speak, I was waiting for Margaret to continue your good intention.
It's an interesting point about the charter fair, because we obviously, that's a charter, so we can't say you can't come because it's damaging the planet, but what we could do, because a couple of years ago, we said no goldfish, for instance, and there were no goldfish surprises. We could ask them to consider ways of greening the fair in terms of, I mean, most of the prizes and stuff were made of synthetic materials, for instance, there would be ways of then improving their carbon footprint. Whether there's a way of negotiating that with them to try and, it's. it's an education thing, isn't it? And also, it's not just educating the the people from the charter fair, but it's also educating the people who go to the charter fair and maybe maybe candy floss might be in a plastic bag and things like that and uh and and the people might be surprised if some of the packaging changed or the prizes given out were more sustainable. You know, there would be ways of picking away at it steadily. Not expecting them to transform overnight, but maybe steadily reducing their carbon footprint. And that would impact not just here because hopefully they would then take that practice elsewhere.
Indeed, yeah, I mean, it's a it's a very specific example, but we can't really tell our residents to make them difficult changes in the S P as a time transfer. To say they're in the round. So I think we have to change as well. Um Robert, do you want?
Yeah, I just uh I can it'd be something which will appear on the event's agenda. I think we can't actually, um you know, it was notable. I was away for the fair on the birthday, one of my family members' birthdays, quite significant, so I wasn't there on Saturday. So um but it was notable that we, as a community of councillors and MPs and everybody was there at the opening, which was a good picture and see everyone supporting it. I think the way that having dealt with them for twenty odd years at the fair, it's um it's quite a careful management, I would suggest, of how you change. And I think that that's something that we've learnt in events and and offices. I think it's a sort of start. It's something that, sort of nature of the fact that they go all around the country. And that they're, I say that it's something that has to be bigger than Buckingham to change those things. It's also about investment. It's also about everything. It's a big change and I can imagine Shonan very responsive people. And and when we've asked them in the past to make changes, um they have always made them on our own cives that we have control over them. And I think challenge is a good thing, but we shouldn't cite things individually, we should cite the whole picture. So I think it's something that I would look for Nina and Tamplard to bring forward any findings from the audit to the events committee. And I would imagine that then the events committee would review those findings. If there's any recommendations they could say, well, I think it's appropriate for an environment committee to audit and the events committee agenda. I think it's something that they should do. We would do it through the offices and then that would come back to the same here. And then the town councillors comment on that audit. I think that's the way to do it. Um but having worked with Shonan for twenty seven years, slowly is the best way. And um and they have always been cooperative. But um it I think I did come through the town at four o'clock in the morning on my way back from Stoney Strackford, Stow, Wolverton. And by now, eight o'clock, ten o'clock in the morning, the town was the cleanest is is for the entire year. It's clean from top to bottom. Um so the charter fair just give it one deep clean twice a year. So um taken all corners, so it does benefit the community that way. Wasn't those so clean at four o'clock in the morning?
No, sorry, yeah. Um it's a shame, I haven't seen her recently.
Yeah, well, she's showing people behaviour, you know, that they need it there on the street for somebody to pick up, which is a.
Yeah, that goes to the point of Mark, is if 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 the stuff that's being sold or given away is creating litter. We've created we created the problem. Um so, you know, I think I think the events committee do, it doesn't need to think seriously. It's it's happily signed up to a climate emergency and motion. It needs to start delivering against that and not just saying to turn our residents off for not doing enough. I have to do change as well.
I I I might have to take it to the events committee, but I think it's not for this committee to tell the events committee what to do. They now make their own decisions.
Thank you for the constitutional advice, Robert. Um so you were quick enough to tell me for the council, probably a climate change motion, which we need to address, so hopefully you can take it very seriously. Um John.
Um I think just picking up on 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 this point there about bigger than Buckingham. I think we've got to be careful how this is presented. Because when it comes to actually climate change, I think we shouldn't go down rabbit hole believing that the reason that we're in the state that we are, and I say we, I mean, the planet, is because of individual actions. I think it's down to a whole heap of measures that are well outside the ambit of what a town council can do. And well outside the ambit of what a Shire council can do. And actually require international efforts, international agreements, COP twenty one coming up pretty soon. And so, and I think we've got to recognise that we can do our bit and it's important that we do our bit. Um but we should also recognise that a lot of the bit that needs to be done is stuff that government and intergovernmental do.
That's a fair point. Um I I think I did purpose my opening comments as about what we can do locally to make a difference. Um but yeah, we can, we're not going to be able to tell India or China to stop stopping using the coal out of forests right now. And preparations tomorrow, but if they interrupt a COP twenty six, I don't know. That's right.
Uh just uh. Uh if we're thinking about this international, could we not involve our twinning associations?
Yeah.
For a climate change, yeah. Climate change ideas or something.
Anton's forty one. What's the German?
Yeah, type it. Germany called it the Anton Kolyar.
We don't directly manage the challenge, but it is something that could be passed on to them as a.
I think the find Norwegian flu is well ahead of us on in terms of environment protection. Most of Germany is, I think, annual. Oh, you can imagine.
And this requires, I think that's rather too big a question for me to try. It's not a German for Anton Kolyar, but is there an English word also? It might be worth it.
Well, that's probably the few French words I know, so I apologise, Annie. I know they French and that is probably one of the few sayings I know, so I do apologise.
So, Niamh, is there a date yet for the first meeting?
The deadline for the poll is tomorrow, so it's a reminder anybody hasn't computed it yet and they aren't interested in the first meeting, while we'll be discussing this in more detail and how whether you want to sort of target that sort of campaign, then you've got tomorrow morning.
Degruin and Veltenshire.
What's that?
Degruin and Veltenshire, which is the green world view.
Right, okay.
And so Annie's other point is, having said that, we can surely learn from other small towns with tripping, so we can.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good point.
In the UK, I mean.
Indeed. Okay, so. So that's the report. So I think we've had a few sort of general discussions of writing the number of the the champions to consider, uh but I think more we just need to ignore the report. So promotion of initiatives, we've kind of already covered a few of those. Um there is a paper.
I I propose we accept the recommendations. They're all good.
Okay, any other questions on on nine point two? Okay, excellent.
Should have agreed.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. And nine point three, uh rural market town group.
I put this in this agenda because I thought it was uh.
I was, yeah, frankly, for Monday, twelve October, and it's entitled United Rural Communities to Tackle Climate Change. There were two main headings. There was transport, including public transport, and there was heating homes. But um there were some general points as well. Rural residents tend to pay more in council tax and receive less than urban residents. Also, you've mentioned COP twenty six and this is apparently, I have must admit, I haven't explored the COP twenty six agenda. But apparently there's hardly anything on there about rural issues. And flooding often affects rural areas and it does affect urban areas as well. Flooding is clearly one of the the first impacts that we've seen in the climate, climate emergency. And the rural population, of course, is relatively low compared to the land mass. And um doesn't tend to maybe have such a high profile or a voice as urban communities. It's more difficult for rural populations to emerge. But the rural, we've heard this already because of that um impact report that Nina presented. The rural carbon footprint tends to typically be higher than the urban footprint. And that's partly because of the limited public transport services in rural areas. And the other point you made, I thought was quite interesting. I know we're in a town, we're not in a village, but we've got bus services from Buckingham in a couple of directions. If you if you're in a village, very often, some of the villages around here, you might be able to get a bus. Not very often from one of the villages that comes into Buckingham. For instance, you wanted to go from Thornborough to um somewhere like Dingshanger, you'd have to come via Buckingham and go out. Everyone doesn't let you do it, actually. You know, you've got village to village transport, public transport is very limited. And that's where they did suggest use electric bikes for that as well. I'm a great advocate of electric bikes. Since we've we've each got one and we've gone down to one car and it's partly as a result of that, so it is really good. Um the challenge is that to reduce your carbon footprint in a rural area is the distance to access essential services like here. We, most of us, we've got G P practice locally, but if you want to access consultant appointments, you've got to go to the Royal Supreme or Milton Keynes. And probably a car journey, you there used to be a bus that went straight to Milton Keynes Hospital. But now you have to use two buses if you want to go to Milton Keynes Hospital, for instance. And to aim to start random, it's two, it's always been two buses. So it doesn't encourage people to use public transport to access something as essential as hospital appointments. Also, the issue of fuel poverty seems to impact more on rural housing. Some of the rural housing stock is of the lower quality than urban stock. And and we talked about two plus car ownerships as part of that order. Um two plus car ownerships is sixty percent in rural households and twenty five percent in urban. So that's significant difference, but that is because you can't, it's not very, you've got to be very committed not to drive a car, I think, in those areas. And there's less money per head on public transport. We talked about electric vehicle charging points in rural areas. Apparently, it's twenty five point one per hundred thousand in a rural area and in an urban area, it's thirty four point one. May not seem a huge difference, but um it's all significant. And because if you're travelling from a village, you're likely to be trapped, your commute or your essential services is likely to be further than people in the town as well, which makes the range anxiety of an electric vehicle possibly higher than it is if you're in an urban area. And they talked about decarbonising pub pub uh public transport buses. It's quite a bit about electric buses. Uh but apparently they're hugely expensive. But in Milton Keynes, they've got this drive over thing, so they can charge up the electric, because they've got some electric buses in Milton Keynes. And they they can get, by induction, get charged up driving along the road. And it's about dissuading car use as well. Um and then there's a lot about insulating insulation of homes, including social housing. And in rural areas, whether it's more of an issue that there are more listed buildings and conservation areas, and that does add to the complications and costs of insulation. But it is something that um we should be encouraging higher insulation standards. And and planning could have quite a role in making sure that some of these a- actions are addressed. Um making sure that new builds or extensions are adequately insulated. And you've raised that as well, John. And the other thing that I thought was, you know, we we, I don't know how many years ago, it's a long while ago, where people stopped going to their local school. There was this choice, you can go anywhere, you go to your best school. And that involves a lot more car journeys. And wouldn't it be better to backpedal on that? If we're serious about this climate issue, shouldn't we be stopping that choice in in education and saying you go to your local school, particularly at primary level? Because you know, we talk about habits, but if the child's habit from five or four is to walk to school because the school's near enough, then that's encouraging them to think about walking rather than going in a car school. And that's where, you know, it starts young, that habit forming, doesn't it? So, I'm sorry, that if I I just got about six pages in there, so consider yourself lucky that you've got some money.
Thank you, Robert. It sounds like there's lots of good uh topics being discussed. And before I take questions, just on the Milton Keynes um bus project. I mean, Milton Keynes, I've got a lot of government funding to be one of the prior towns for both the E V cars and buses. Um so hopefully those findings will trickle their way through um to the future rounds of of bus funding. But one of the things that Buckinghamshire did win recently was um car, electric car sharing trial, uh which involves the induction charging as used in a lot of these buses, but this in this case for a car. Um so that's the trial at this more than time down the mile to see if that actually helps change people's perceptions about the ease of using an electric car and also do they need a second of the power in the house also. Be interested to see what the findings from that trial will be. Um I did did hope we could have it back in, but uh for whatever reason, the logistics in my world, that's in that instance. Um John, do you have some questions?
Uh well, firstly, thank you. That was really, really interesting. And I think there are lots of ideas in there. Maybe we or the Shire council would be able to adopt. I think it's basically something really, really important. And then we can do to encourage it. I know there are some government schemes, but the real problem for a lot of people who are in the properties in the values is they rent them. If you rent a, if you rent a property, you're not going to invest in in room and insulation. It's the landlord's something, so you know, you see that as a cost. We have to find a way get over that. And I know I'm sure people here are not well about the actions being taken by these climate change activists doing that. And it's to the M twenty five and so forth. But they're making a very point that if you want to reduce, you know, carbon usage or carbon production, we've got to find ways of actually keeping the heat we've got in our houses rather than eating the planet literally and metaphorically. Um so I think whatever we can do to encourage that, I think is is worthwhile. And it does come down to cash. A lot of people and and whose property it is, you know, um and that's the problem with solar panels too, is that the people who benefit from that, they're like here. We won't benefit from the solar panels, even though the town council is taking a low to angle. Um it'll be the 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 committee that runs the the community centre that will get the benefit in terms of reducing electricity costs. And that's the same really with any tenant, is that the homeowner might pay but doesn't get the benefit. So we that somehow that that equation somehow needs to change. That's been taken up in action to do that. But fascinating stuff. Pretty fascinating stuff, thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh to be honest, I think, you know, pointing to some of the existing schemes, we could probably be more effective than sticking hands to to mortgage money, because we have some very good schemes in Buckinghamshire that not only people know that, like the Better House and Better Health Scheme. A number of grant schemes for 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 low income families that want to improve their boiler or the insulation, all sorts. Um I'm always surprised at how little attention they get. I push them all the time on social media. And but they they find it really difficult to get get businesses at work because not enough people are directed to them. Everyone's very quick to pay the government and actually do lots of activity locally to help do some of these things. So it'd be great as a town council group to help direct people to these sources of of support. Um as well as some of the additional financial additions, uh the fuel fuel allowance and some extra coverage payments and the rest of it. Um but I think picking Margaret's point, you you um the conservation area is is an interesting issue in terms of both insulating externally, which is often the only realistic way of insulating the body because you have the space inside to do it. Or put a solar on us. And it is something that they certainly, if we're looking at our design value for the never plan, that is something we could, like the view of the perspective, if there are certain things that we would tolerate or not. I know looking at some of the planning applications that come through the system at the moment, the heritage officer gets very picky about visible plasterboard or whatever it is. Um, that they're heritage interesting, which of course covers any plans to improve your insulation, so. Line mortar, uh, interior. So it's a really difficult challenge when you live in an old, old area. Uh, but I know, uh, we'll probably do an update from there with the Housing Trust to see where they are with their updated their housing stock. So I know they went through a programme a couple of years ago. Um, I did a world project, insulation on the outside a couple of years back. You can tell they wanted a private, they didn't get it inserted. Um, it might be useful to understand why they are in terms of helping, helping our residents' houses that haven't been improved yet. But yeah, I think there's some local activity we can do without disrupting the general day life of our residents. Um, Hannah, did you have a question before I was wrong?
Robin, yeah. Well firstly, thank you, um, for that. The points you raised, um, say, education. The bird's eye style on education has been punted through choice in Smechen stroke, sector school of education, so junior school education, um, that, um, areas successive government, not just the present government, by the way. Um, present government, the, the present government, um, and the previous government. The reality of it is, how do you get, if you want to go to education, I know we said junior school. But the biggest bus used in Buckingham, um, which comes from the widest area is, um, the Buckingham Brown School. It's all like a regional education facility now, in the sense that it's catching the area's quite thought. Um, how, it's a bigger change of mindset to get people to think about local good. And that, and that means you have to give people the confidence that their local stores are the schools they want their children to be in. So it's really a big question that one. I'm not against the question being asked. It's, it's just a really big body of work. No government seems to have cracked the four schools of belief yet. And people tend to think their children have only got one opportunity. So that, that question, just using junior schools, does the junior schools contribute to it? Because people come into the junior school to access the next piece of education. And as for the community centre that council hardly mentioned, I think that decision that who would benefit from it, I think if we're making the investment, unless the town council is sounding different, um, will benefit from the investment on the community centre. Um, and that'll be a future report. But I am cheered up with, I think you brought more challenges than you brought solutions. Because it is only, and I say cheered up, because it's only when you look at the challenges, which are the four year, that you can find solutions. Um, and, and we're not, you know, that, that's a good thing to challenge each other. But I am worried that, um, your comments about the COP not having those elements of rural elements in the COP. We are a rural area and, and COP twenty, I think I thought, one, twenty six, I think, ten, correct, twenty six. That is a real big thing because Buckingham's rural, most of the United Kingdom's rural. Um, so that may be something that, a missed opportunity because rural industry, rural market and rural life has a knowledge of it through working in agriculture that, um, can offer lots of solutions to the environment. It can do lots of things to make it better. Um, landowners, um, can be a good people, big landowners that want to do things to assist the environment, from my experience. Um, and maybe they make an income out of it as well. So I think it's a mess that it wasn't in there. Because that would get you a big hit. And they're such big players in the fact that they own it. Um, most of the towns and commons are probably big landowners as well, so.
And I think you're probably drifting away from the point there, Robin, but, uh, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. Just that, that point about the grants that are available and, you know, that a lot of people don't know about it. You know, we have in the past had green affairs, but there's a spring fair on the screen. I just wondered whether we could get somebody from Buckinghamshire Council with a big display and really promote it, or even in one of our markets. I don't know if there is anybody available to do that, but.
Well, the, the, the whole issue one is actually contracted out to an agency. It's not the Energy Foundation, I think. Um, but they, they, they do do events with the children's, uh, family centre. And so I, I did that thing just before lockdown when we, we gave away a, a, um, snow cooker to one of the families as a, as a condition of how to cook more efficiently. Yeah, it's probably been a while since they've done anything in Buckingham, so.
Well, obviously it's been difficult, hasn't it, this last year and a half to do that sort of event? But hopefully moving forward, we will be able to do that kind of promotional activity again.
Yeah. And of course, there's, there's lots of bits of the council that we probably could encourage in, well, in terms of the waste and composting energy, you know, there's lots of bits we could have to encourage.
And we've had some parts of Buckinghamshire that have really good relationships with, with, with free water companies and.
Absolutely. Yeah, from recycle for bucks. And I think, you know, each of those sort of partner agencies plays into objectives within our own climate emergency action plan. I think, you know, our next step is climate champions to decide timing with what we've just discussed earlier on in the agenda. Which one are we going to tackle first? Which one of those objectives, whether food or travel or housing? We can't do everything we want once, let's take one at a time and sort of slow it all the way through. But which one can we start with? And then build a programme around that in terms of promotion of publicity, not just for ourselves, but for the communities as a whole.
Which, um, yes, can I just, um, run on what you've just said now and tie it with one of the suggestions that we came back with? Electric bikes. Why don't we plan to the committee boards for funding to support, because key people buy some bikes that can encourage riding between the different towns? That might help encourage people's cycle and also, sorry, develop that habit of environmentally friendly transport. That's a suggestion, because I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, it might be something we have to think of. But I don't know what the classification would be, but it might be a thought, you know, considering what, what you said about rural transportation.
Well, there's certainly some funds out there. They may not even be cancelled, maybe even government, so they are a way for this government funding. We've got three different trials going on, different criteria, just to see how they can change places, my thoughts.
Yeah, because if you have a few here, a few there, a few different towns, people riding the path there. And you could go and do something else. I think it's done in London, it feels serious as well.
There's a future, there's something to, to think about, to champion this meeting.
Can I ask you, um, Anna's point? So from much earlier, Anna made a point. Uh, I like the electric bike idea, but I wonder whether that also requires some safe cycle ways as well. Uh, and then my point is the idea of a green community event fair in the spring seems useful. This could be something that climate champions lead on. So we do have a spring fair. It's usually in the diary, I haven't agreed yet, but certainly we can make sure we bring that to the table.
You would get it, we, we turn it back to being an environmentally focused initiative. Because I remember a year back, it used to be very important.
It is, it's always important. I think what's called spring fair, I don't know what it is.
It's pretty green.
It's pretty green.
It's pretty fair, it's something interesting.
I'll be out there and he's element buying all his vegetables and stuff, I mean.
Okay, yes, just on a connected point, especially pre-connectedity. Um, our largest vehicle is on the three year lease, which is due to end next April. Uh, we're going to have to bring the posed replacement to the natural resources committee. We won't have to go anyway, it's for the timescale. And we've tried really hard to get an electric option, but for a vehicle that size, there is an electric option, but it's twice the price, it's really twice the price of a diesel option at the moment. So for that scale at the moment, it's not something we'd recommend for the council. So we'll probably recommend another three year lease, I think. And then hopefully in three years' time, we'll be able to actually, because things are improving, but not, the bigger you get, the harder it is still to get.
I fully appreciate the time. So I know when I was looking to buy the Barch minibus, we wanted, we desperately wanted our electric. But either size was available, the captain of the council was too high. But I think price is changing very fast. Hopefully by the end of this, the business options will be had. Um, but given mileage at the end of the year, it does, it's not a huge impression. It's one of those, it's a two thousand mile a year type thing, isn't it? Okay, I think we've had a good share of it, uh, good comments and ideas, uh, so thank you, Margaret, for the opportunity. Right, Lacy Hill Soap and Panels, uh, who's going to go first?
Yeah, so a quick update, you actually probably know, but now we have Lacy, we have solar panels on Lacy Hill.
Yay.
Great. Uh, and actually putting them on a new building has been really straightforward. So it's, the insurers are really happy that everything's in the most completed area, fast and straightforward. Maintenance is actually quite low. Um, we haven't quite solved exactly how we get the tariff being paid for stuff being sold back to grid. This would have been simple about six months ago, but it turns out energy companies are actually quite busy doing other things at the moment. So while I'm giving you the quote from the first baby who had income, it might be the first rate was about that time, you actually did it so soon, actually. It's just tricky working with energy companies at the moment, for this kind of business.
Great. Well, thanks a lot. Um, good to get one, good to work.
Yeah, firstly, I thank the staff for getting me to come to it. I popped a console on Friday and, um, and made it really, really good. And, uh, I think, uh, I made a comment, I think, when the site is, uh, I think councillor of Norwood, Chair Environment, so many years ago. And I believe that it was probably one of the first motions that councillor got on council, asking us to go down. So, so, and I didn't do that ten years ago, so we hadn't got there very quickly, but we, we had got there. So let's not, let's not, um, let's not decry that, but of course we now open the community centre. But it is a step in the right direction. And the amount of difficulties we had getting there cannot be understated. Um, I won't go into them tonight, but there have been lots of difficulties on the way. And I, I must commend the present town clerk and officers for getting us to where we are today, the difficulties. And thank you so much for the effort you've gone there. And I think we owe you a big thanks.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, happy to not be updating on the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Uh, move on to our ten and book cards to receive the discussion report from the please, please.
Oh, so you're happy. Oh, in front of you, so this has back to, um, action from March in the year. Um, where councillor Smith, uh, proposed reviewing the existing cars and their intersections to see if we would benefit or residents would benefit from our publicizing more. Um, so the important thing to reference popularity, um, of our website and the many trails, maps and features that, um, that we have on there, also within the tourist information centre. Um, it is something that we discuss on a monthly basis as part of our social media content, online sessions. Um, featured in a lot of our campaigns and initiatives and also, um, I see if you all know in the newsletter. Uh, so the recommendation is for is to conduct an audit of the circular walks, directional signs and feedback. Does anyone get me to updating Nina's second? Do you have a stock on the depot?
Thank you, Nina. So the circular walk is an interesting one, because that's fifteen years old next year. Um, so it'll be good to get it in tick tock condition for that. As an aside, I've also been, um, I used to run the tourist information office website when it was managed by the Royal Jail. And we had a collection of all those, um, ads in and around Buckingham, but, um, some of them are already in the town centre. Website, that's town council website. Uh, but I have been a correspondent with our, uh, community board coordinator. And it looks like we will get some support to, if you try to republish some of the ones that are out of print. So we'll expand the collection of, of walk in and around Buckingham, particularly the ones that do buildings like, or eighteen, that sort of thing. Um, so I think given the interest in some of our rural accessibility and, and those walks that people may not fully appreciate. Um, we'll give them, give people a wider, wider choice. So I have some useful stuff happening on the right topic. Uh, Margaret?
Yeah, thank you. Um, the Otter Trail, surely that should come off now, shouldn't it? And it was on the, um, website, that probably should come up. And another thing on maps. Um, the, this was referred to in the cemetery document, actually. So when, when it said the nearest public toilet, the back Braddy Road Cemetery was the Moreton Road toilets. I thought, well, isn't it the, um, Cornwall's Meadow? And then the map that I think was associated with it didn't show with the toilets on Cornwall's Meadow. Um, although that might have been my printed map, which was the latest version that we had. And I know we don't do that, but maybe we should point out, people who produce that printed map, that there are toilets and shop mobility there, because I'm either of them, I think, are on there. My mum was there on the map that comes, the mayor, but, um, so that was just a couple of points of, of that. Um, that's it, I think.
Welcome back to Margaret for this.
No, I think that, I think that's it. I, I think I've lost the, where I am.
Okay, we'll come back to you if there's anything else. Um, Robin, then.
Yeah, um, yeah, I took, took the Otter Trail and when it was drafted, the trail was concurrent. But, um, the map, just information produced using that periodically and it doesn't cost us anything because it's produced through sponsorship, covers the cost of producing the map and the bench to do that is generally not just being, being the points that you raised should go, I'm not sure where they are with the title of that map being produced. Produced every so often years. I'm interested in what chairman says about the information, about the external walks. Um, because we, our town centre manager, it's been useful to have that information gathered through there. Because she's done a lot, she's spent quite a lot of investment on town centre manager and good information we should share and, um, and, and put it through there. Um, so that seems to be a route that information should go.
But it would have had Tom Clark, so hopefully it found the right application.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm only making a comment that, you know, she's, she's done an excellent job at doing other stuff around the town. Um, and there's the acts and the things and the work that she's done. So, and we wouldn't be where we are today if she hadn't done that. So I think there's a, I've been saying to councillor Smith, I must have, um, been the right thing to do. Because it might have been what it wasn't right. So, um, that mostly did was being positive for the county, was positively about it, um, for the town. So I think this, where, where do we go with my next question with this? What, what's going to be the end product of this? Because.
The recommendation at this stage is the circular walk audit.
Yeah, because the circular walk chairman, of course, councillor Smith was, um, part of that before he joined the town council.
As well as the lime end, Mike, was on the community work ceremony.
In fifty years, I remember the meeting and in this very chamber. And, um, actually getting the funding for the circular walk wasn't an easy thing to do. And, and it was all put in, in our, 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 my, my, I think it's always used to have history, uh, history, don't know where we go.
Um, but the recommendation is very clear on this paper at the moment. The recommendation is that we do a lot of circular walk directional signage. So we can come back to other footpaths at a later stage, and that's the recommendation at this point in time.
Pretty good, I think.
John?
Just to say that I think it is just about physical directional signs. Maybe an audit could involve the virtual world as well, stuff on Google Maps or other maps like that, so that there's some way of improving that.
Yeah.
A lot of people use their phones now to walk around it.
Yeah, indeed.
We are at the actual.
Well, there's Buxton, of course, but Buxton doesn't include circular walk, does it? I don't think. Not by any doubt. But I think there's a way of, of doing it, you've got the virtual world and the real world as well, so.
Okay, so happy with the recommendation?
Agreed.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, so right away, members to discuss possible routes for submission as for lights away. Um, so I've sent all sorts of something to the office today for the conversations on some bits between Morton World and, uh, Western Avenue and Paulworth Crescent. Um, which I have a number of paths that haven't been formally recorded. So there were ones I, I was much, well, I don't know, so, so over the last couple of years, well, there's a county council, I know there's a new town council, these have been raised to me, um, as issues. Obviously, we're also not sure on that map. Obviously, we're also not sure that that map is, is the housing estate, that's why I'm smacking it, and in Little, of course. Um, but there's the, the Castle House cops or city or whatever, that would work. Um, obviously, that's public space, but it does link both West Ham Avenue and up to Auburn. Um, it will be good, at the moment, I don't think it'd be good to get that formalised. Um, I also, there is the link down the eastern side of the new housing estate to Morton World, which of course is a private road. But again, I think that'd be rather nice if that was formalised as a, if not a, a least permissive access, a right of way as well, just to make sure it doesn't get stocked up at some point in the future. And then the more contentious one, the one that gets raised with me as a, as an ex-county councillor, is the Blue Bit, which is the dip from the top end of, of, um, at the bottom end of the new housing estate, and down to basically the C A B office. Uh, which is all, has been used for decades as an informal link, but it's never, it's obviously private land. Um, but it is a well-used link, has been for a long time. Um, so there are my suggestions. So happy for people to ponder that while we take any other comments or suggestions, so John.
I agree with all of those, Blue Line especially, I think it's a very good point. Um, and also I suggest the route from the London Road Bridge, round the back of Kenwood Court, that comes out near the bridge, near the skate park, that little room that was put in, it can actually be.
On the Kenwood Court side.
Yeah.
That was formalised.
Has it been formalised?
It was formalised when I was on town council, yeah.
Is it? Oh, okay, okay.
It just, we've had a long time doing it.
Okay, great.
I should add, I expect you, councillor, why you're going to have.
There's no footpath sign.
Um, no, but it's, um, it's not a right of way to miss it, I think.
Can we make it a right of way?
No, it's outside. This is not, it's not public town for starters, so it's always a challenge.
Yeah.
If you want to do a route wide occasionally.
Unfortunately, the, the problem is, of course, there's lots of alternative routes that are only about twenty metres away from it. So you can't win the argument that it's critical to get them to be, because if you just walk through the skate park, it's still a bit similar.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we were lucky to get Chris, if I think we were trying to.
Just one, thank you for that time you put in to do that, they're excellent routes, I mean, it's one I appreciate. Just the correction, um, I believe it's adopted, but the walk way through the Harpen, down past the allotment, down to, I think it's formally adopted. And because some of the words are done by different elements of the council, can we just check that it is actually adopted? Because it goes across, um, then in, I think it is adopted, but it would be silly to miss it if it isn't, because it's used so much for people. We talked about, um, the bit, we go past the allotments.
Yeah, cycle there.
Um, no, no, it's, it's, you know where you get the allotments off the Baulden Road?
Yeah.
And then you walk down into the Harpen, that's a major way of people getting to the town centre, I believe it's adopted.
Hans from Baulden Road, isn't it through?
Because if it isn't, it'd be silly to not use it at this opportunity to get it adopted, because it does mean people have the option of walking. And it's, it's a cookie way into the town centre.
So, not only the cycle route.
It is a cycle route, I'm sure it's.
I, I just.
I think it's a highway, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is, that's true.
Always a chance.
I thought it was adopted, but I know you mentioned to make sure we don't miss it if it wasn't, I'm pretty sure it is, but, um.
Well, they have a bit more with their laps, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I wish you were in the right meeting, but I, I didn't realise that blue route wasn't a comped.
It was quite loud, so.
Um, you get through the farm a bit when you walked across, so you've got every right to go there, so, um, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's why we're getting the interest in debate about if, if we want to go down a route of, you know, getting, um, acronyms, accolades, or even formal recollection, people using it for extended years, like we did for, um, our talk earlier.
Yeah, quite different, I think, and we use seven.
But I mean, these are things that could get lost in this time of the market.
That was a big way now, wasn't it?
Okay, we'll, we'll do that then.
Um, right, did you have any questions or additions or thoughts?
I was just wondering, uh, you know, the footpath that goes from the back of Adam's Close, linking to, um, Stone Rides and, uh, also Grenville, uh, sorry, Grenville Road, is that the?
I think it's, I think that's a right away on.
Oh, that's it.
Yeah, but, um, while we're looking, there's a, there's a really good website now on the, on the Buckinghamshire Council website, whether with. That's okay, again, just to double check, what is a designated right of way? But there's certainly in some of the newer estates, we've kept the rights away, so up on the major Morton Estates, we've got rights away cutting through these streets. And then at the top end of where you just mentioned, there were some rights away that came into Buckingham. But there was a period of time between the sixties through to the millennium where they kind of got absorbed into footpaths or just highway, uh, or didn't get registered, so. Like some of these. Okay, is there something to say, Robert?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent, um, I'll, I'll, I'll get the town clerk to separate the list. So if there's, if there's anything else that springs to mind, we could, uh, to bring that back to another agenda that's, that's deemed to be critical.
I'll live on this, ask the book.
Um, once we've done the research, what to do next?
We have done that before, previously, you said there's nothing about rights.
The latest fashion, when you don't get it off.
I mean, certainly all the ones I've put there are ones that have been mentioned to me over the last two or three years, maybe a little bit. In fact, someone berated me, um, when I was at canvassing back in April, that one as well, so, it might be nice to get it progressed. Um, excellent, so that's rights away, so Buckingham Community Wildlife Project, you've got the minutes of the last meeting, it's quite comprehensive.
No, do you?
Yeah, I'm, 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 Margaret, yes.
Can I, thank you, can I just ask a question? If those in fact are ten, to tree planting in the Harpens on the twenty first of November, I don't think that's correct.
No, that's changed since, so this is back in July, this meeting, but no, we moved that one to middle of January.
Yeah.
Middle of January.
That'd be before April, not after April.
Indeed.
Okay.
Maybe they're all organised, how tree planting.
Um, okay, any other questions on that? Yes, we'll roll those in, uh, to community board and board update, uh, so we've got the minutes of the meeting, any last one to those?
Um, nothing for me.
Okay, so obviously as a reminder, some of the things that are being discussed in the Buckinghamshire villages area. One of the things I keep on, on trying to approve is, is how the, so behind the scenes parks and amenities, team of Buckinghamshire Council, X A V D C, actually talk about their plans for the coming year, so be it tree planting or improvements. So it has come to light that, uh, some of the stuff that we quite like to do, the council cops or city, is on the radar of the council, so we were pushing against an open door there. Um, and again, for hard plans and some of the other Buckinghamshire council parks, I think there's an opportunity to help influence there for, um, just a couple of trees that might appear. Um, because it's on there on the agenda, so hopefully with the community board and the town council, we can improve some of that coordination. Um, and then what just, just for your information is also I'm pushing to raise the issue of the, of the, uh, uh, riverside bit by the car park, um, which is kind of left over space between car park and river. Uh, trying to get that back on the radar, because it's slipped off everyone's, to do this over the last couple of years. So the board, what particularly, I think, could benefit from being somewhat improved.
Maintenance.
Um, so again, hopefully through the community board and through the council.
Yep.
Excellent, um, so any questions for, so regarding that?
Just, just to follow on what you said, I do wonder if you do need to sort of pop them down because of pandemic maintenance of some of these areas. I was down talking to, I tell you, I wasn't far from you today, while they were doing the, um, maintenance of Fisher's building, which you would be just. Yeah, so, uh, I was down there today, it took quite a long time to actually get them there. And I think that's going to be an ongoing discussion without saying why not, and whatever, what's actually going on with the structure of maintenance. They're there now today, and they're going to be there, but it seems to be quite a long time getting them to come. I don't want to criticise anyone, they did a great job, a little bit bad, some of the chapters, that probably slowed it down for half an hour, didn't it? Um, but, um, but, um, but no, no, I think we do need to find out what actually the maintenance going forward is going to be.
Okay, good. Um, right, move on to news releases, um, so, so I'm in the, I think we've probably won most of the sort of cameras. I wonder if somebody ever did a dog bin release, but we, I don't know, yeah. Um, and I suppose we should probably do something on the flood response.
Yes.
Now, good, perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the second one, I'm sorry.
Um, I was supposed to be reminded if we've installed a dog bin up in Tishley.
Yeah.
Really important.
Nothing more important than dog bins, when you get residents come to you about the problems that there is.
So, uh, that's probably enough for us to get on with, I think, this is, the flood response probably will be the quickest one. Okay, thank you, um, chairs and mountains. So dating up to the meeting is the sixth of December, and we'll summon eight with the low carbon in Spanish.
So I'm not sure.
So, bye.